Bringing this meeting of Gold Hill City Council together here on Thursday, December nineteenth. A little after five.
Mayor Palmer?
Excused.
Counselor Beechheim?
Yep.
Counselor Bergren?
Yeah.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Rigney?
Excused.
Counselor Stancliff?
Here.
We have a call in present.
Okay, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number two, council considerations. Our council considerations, number two on the agenda. A report, city manager evaluation by RV cog HR consultant Adrian Majeski, I said your name right? All yours, thank you.
Oh, good, we did test this one.
Okay. Good evening, councilors and city manager and clerk. I'm Adrian Majeski, I'm the HR director for the Rogue Valley Council of Governments. RV cog was asked to conduct a twelve month evaluation, which actually I should say is the latter. It's the six month because originally the city had conducted their own six month evaluation. And during the time when RV cog collected that information and presented it, we were asked by the mayor and council to conduct the last twelve months of the full, twelve months of your city manager Lily Morgan's performance evaluation. So we did that. What we did was we sent out an electronic evaluation that went to the mayor, council, and also to Lily Morgan to conduct her own self evaluation. I'll read an overview for the folks in TV land to understand kind of our narrative for this evaluation. So the city of Gold Hill councilors and the mayor were asked to participate in an evaluation survey. Five responses were received from council and Lily Morgan was also asked to complete the same survey as a self evaluation. The survey consists consisted of twenty, I'm sorry, forty-two individual questions that were divided into eight categories. Each category also included an overall rating score and the optional comment section for each of those competencies. So the competencies that were measured were eight questions on leadership qualities, six questions on teamwork qualities, five questions on oral and written communication qualities, three on strategic focus qualities, five on customer service qualities, five on professionalism, five on fiscal responsibility qualities, and five on relationship with city council. The ratings considered for each competency were five stars, which would be exemplary, four, which would be exceeds expectations, three being meets expectations, two means developing, still working on it, and one is significant concerns. The average score from city council on the forty-two questions was four point four. The average self evaluation score from city manager Lily Morgan was four point seven. The combined averages represent scores above exceeds expectations. No individual questions resulted in a variance greater than one point. So that means between how Lily had rated herself and how city council rated her, there was no variance greater than one point, which I think is is huge. I think she has an accurate idea of her performance, and I think council the same. So I feel like you're on the same page. Usually see a greater variance, maybe not at the city manager level, but usually during staff evaluations, how staff thinks they're doing might be a little off compared to management or leadership. They are illustrated on the following detailed score report, which also includes comments provided by council respondents. Lily's comments are also reflected under tenure as city manager and they're underneath council's comments. So as we go to this first page, this is showing the competencies that were measured and the question numbers. And then we did the averages. If council wanted to, I could also email and share the answers to each individual question, but we just took the competencies as a whole. I think if there were concerns, we would probably have pulled those out to let council know what those were. This goes over the individual questions, which I don't think we need to go on. What I did want to bring to everyone's attention really is the comments. So the numbers speak for themselves. We wanted to report the averages on the competencies, but I think that the comments are really, at least for an HR director, that's really the meat and potatoes. What are we saying that from our own words, from our own experiences with Lily? And then also from Lily's perception of her performance. So with leadership qualities, I'm very pleased with the way Lily handles everything. She's anchored in a healthy, professional manner and never sways. Best city manager I've ever known. I'm enjoying watching Lily build her team to operate the city of Gold Hill. As she grows in her leadership role, she demonstrates to her subordinates that she's willing to do what it takes to help them be successful. She leads by example. She's an asset to Gold Hill and her constituents. Gold Hill is truly blessed for having a person with integrity and honor managing their town. Lily states that she strives to perform with the highest level of excellence and integrity. I encourage this of the staff as well. I've asked them what their, what our responsibilities are and encourage them to look for opportunities to do more than what they think our limits are, to look for ways to serve the community better and take responsibility for anything city related. So as we go through, this was measuring her leadership. I won't, I know this is a little lengthy here, so I won't go through and read each one because I know we have other business to get to tonight. So I wanted to give this to you. If there is something you want me to read out loud, otherwise I know it's also shared in the agenda packet online and it's here on the screen for everyone that's attending via Zoom. With this, what I did note as I went through some of Lily's work and she and I have worked together. When we look at grants that the city is set to receive, the impact of those grants, it since Lily's been on board, one point seven million approximately. So that's for 2024. There were also some that in 2023 she had rewritten those in order for it to be pushed through. So she did go out to look for new grant opportunities as well as rewrite those that needed to be in order for the city to receive them. So I think that's a huge financial impact to the city going out, working to get those grants. And I, we all know how how tough that can be sometimes. I did look at Lily's contract. There were a few things in here. And first I should say probably for the record, when we're looking at performance evaluations for a city manager that has an employment agreement, it does talk about in here evaluations. The city council will conduct a performance evaluation annually in December to assess the performance of the manager with a possibility of negotiated salary increases based on job performance. So I know that we are headed towards the end of our year and that we do have a new council next year. I'm not sure if we want to look at that contract, her employment contract and make a recommendation for council next year or how this typically goes. What what the council now would like to do if we are to look at compensation? If we look at increasing a severance package and just look at that contract to see what the council thinks? If this evaluation constitutes any change in salary or in compensation.
It didn't have a time. Right. Time wise. Didn't have a time ending. Right. It's on the screen and it's going to be there and.
It's, and I can scroll to any portion that you would like to see. The contract is an at will contract. And which means that at any time, the council can vote to terminate the contract. And so I think there are some things in the contract that would be worth negotiating. And if the council would be open to that, the language I had recommended in the resolution says the city council directs RV cog to negotiate a contract amendment for the city manager. That would give opportunity for us to go through it and say, would you consider this? And we can bring it back to the council to see if the council would be open to that. Because I don't necessarily think hashing through the contract here tonight is the best use of our time. I will tell you that there was one area in particular I wanted to bring up that I had actually asked Adrian to look at to see if there's any comparables, but I also had brought to the attention of the mayor and the council president. And that is that the contract says that I will maintain additional umbrella insurance in the amount of a million dollars for using my personal vehicle while on city time. And it's at my own expense. So that's cost me almost $500 since I've come to work here. And generally speaking, you don't want to have to have something that costs you to have a job. I don't mind having the insurance policy, but if the city wants me to have extra insurance, that perhaps maybe that cost could be offset in some manner or. But matter of fact, I don't know if the council even realizes I had to obtain that extra insurance and pay for it before I ever came to work here. And so I had an expense coming to work here. And I don't mind having that insurance policy, but it is something that I would like us to look at. And and Adrian can speak to what she found as far as related to that type of language in a contract.
And so I did talk with Anne Marie Alfred, that's our executive director, and she was previously our HR director. I hadn't seen it in an employment agreement before, but she has seen far more than I have. So I tend to go next door to her office to talk these things through. She hadn't seen that before either. We do want to make sure typically that the employee doesn't have an expense to be employed. But we understand if it's a position the city wants to hold, we would recommend as RV cog that we shouldn't force higher than what's the statutory limit. So whatever the state, a million seems high, there may be a reason, or maybe it just hasn't been reviewed and kind of just push through to the next manager. You could compensate her and pay for that expense. Or we could just see what the state minimum limit is for insurance and just require that she obtain that minimum level instead of the million dollar coverage. So we can do both. We can look at that, see what her expense would be and compensate her and pay for that difference. Just know that those premiums tend to go up every year, so it might be each time needing to see how much does that cost and how much do we want to adjust the salary?
Well, I got a question, Malia, when you guys are in the process of preparing, really, why did we put that in there for a million dollars?
I don't recall even discussing it. I don't.
It doesn't make sense to me.
No.
For an employee to have to have.
No.
Have a balloon.
No. I did from a long time ago. Yeah.
I I can speak to potentially the reasoning they would is that if I'm driving my personal vehicle for city business, that if something were to happen, somebody could then say the city was liable. And at the same time, I I'm going to just point out further in the contract right below professional liability, the city is obligated to indemnify and defend me against claims brought against me in the scope of my job. So if if I'm already doing that, you guys already are to defend and save harmless and indemnify me against tort professional liability claims or other legal action. And that's also a part of it, but I would, I would think that's part of the, you know.
Because at my job, when I use my own vehicle for public use, I get reimbursed for mileage and so on and such. But I'm still covered by my company for anything that happens because I am on company time salary.
I wasn't asked. It was something that was included and I really was, there was a couple of other areas of focus that I was looking at that were of interest to me. You know, you'll see in other city manager contracts that there's often an ex, a vehicle expense, like a per diem for an expense or a flat amount. Or if they don't provide a vehicle for your use for business, there's usually a compensated amount. But money's tight for the city. So, you know, what they did is said, okay, well, you can reimburse your mileage. I think I've done that maybe once in a year. I just don't, you know, and maybe twice when I went to the conference, you know, that kind of thing. But I I really the amount of time and all that kind of stuff. So there, there's some things of consideration, but I honestly, the other thing is, is the severance package. Currently it's, it's three months and and then after five years, it can go up to six months. Well, what I had asked for is that for every year of service, that it would go up a month. So I earn more at the longer I'm here, up to a cap. And but I think that if you look at others, you know, generally speaking, that's either a minimum of three or six months to start with, not maxed out like mine is. And again, what do we have money to do? Well, part of that is us trying to get this place stable. And when we have a two point some million dollar budget coming into here and we've impacted another 1.6 million this year alone, I think that's something that should be taken into consideration. And but I would recommend that we take those as separate issues. That if the council is open to looking at amending the contract, that you can direct Adrian to have that conversation and we can bring something back for the council to adopt. And I would recommend that to be a separate conversation than necessarily the compensation. One thing that I would ask the council to consider is I'm not asking for a pay increase overall. I would say that the the performance, in my opinion, warrants something. But instead of changing the salary for the next year, I would ask that you instead maybe consider a bonus. Says you've achieved this this year, but you're going back to your salary. And maybe I can earn that again in a year if I've done a really good job. But that way you're not stuck with paying me higher indefinitely. And.
And I would mention that would cost the city less in the long run than a continuous, you know, an increase to compensation, a one time would definitely cost less in the long run.
But that is up to council to decide. And but that would be my recommendation that that would be something for consideration.
So what you're thinking is you and Adrian would get together and propose a new contract?
An amendment, maybe?
I would say an amendment to the current.
If that's at your direction, if you want it exactly as it is, I'm not quitting. But I think that it would be, it'd be worth looking at.
Well, and we, we do a lot of these. This is usually I have concerns of, do we want to present some of these comments? Do we want, and I just think this is a glowing performance evaluation, really reflecting the hard work. I've been here a few times where she was, you know, about to get up to the ceiling to run wires. She had to run too, and just nothing is beneath her. There's not a job too small, too big. And so, yes, at the council's direction, I, I think we should take that if we wanted to remove the insurance requirement, take that as its own separate thing and then discuss compensation if that's what the council chooses to do.
I'm down.
I think we should definitely look at the insurance.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should look at all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a stipend for my, instead of mileage, so that she doesn't have to track every mile.
Yeah.
That's why she's not reporting it is because it's.
And they can bring that alert.
Absolutely. Lily, could you send out, you copy the contract?
I can.
I'm gonna have a copy of it just to compare.
And it could set the council's mind at ease if we, if Lily looks at what the city's coverage is. Because if the city's coverage is high, that should protect the city from, you know, Lily needing that umbrella policy to cover on top of what the city already probably has pretty high coverage. So that could be something to Lily if the council wants to see Gold Hill's coverage that could help ease any concerns of removing that from the contract. If there are concerns, there may not be.
So if we make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four, R thirty-three, all of these factors are? No?
Not yet. So I, I, let me just go to the the resolved portion so that there's no question if that's okay. So the first one is that it ratifies the twelve month evaluation. That's attached in exhibit one. The, the second is acknowledgement of performance. City council acknowledges the city manager's contributions and accomplishments during the evaluation period and expresses its appreciation for dedication and effort in serving the community. Three is continued support. The council commits to providing continued support and resources to the city manager to ensure ongoing success and effective management of the city's affairs. Contract, this was the recommended little language that I put in there. If you want it changed, we can do that. The city council directs RV cog to negotiate a contract amendment for the city manager. So that kind of leaves it blank that it's not predetermined what that outcome is. And any portion of this would have to be agreed upon on both. So we would bring it back to the council, any of those recommendations that we can agree upon. But this at least buys us more time for this portion that you're directing the negotiation to happen. And then compensation, the city council has decided to compensate the city manager's performance and directs RV cog to ensure that this is carried out as directed by the council. It's very, it's not easy to create a resolution that re, tries to predict what a compensation may be considered for yourself that doesn't put yourself in a self-serving thing. I didn't put a dollar amount in there, notice. I, I, that would have been fun. I'm like, okay, let's do one percent of the grants. Oh, no. Just.
Sure.
No, but, but and when I talked to Bill Landis and what I saw in the notes from the conversation before I was hired in November of two thousand twenty-three, that he said, you know, we, we didn't give Lily everything she asked for in the contract. And he said, but the intent was you can come back and ask for a pay increase at the end. But I am also aware that when Adam came here, the council opted to raise the salary of the city manager substantially. And, and so I wasn't the first to have the salary that I have. But the idea was that we would have a different outcome. The other thing I'll say is just last month, the council opted to add to my duties, the recorder duties. And, you know, but if you think about the things that we've accomplished this year with a charter change coming into effect with some code upgrades that needed to happen, and there's more to come, getting a hold of the finance system, and we are almost to the point to get two years' worth of audits hopefully done soon. And some big steps, but I still don't feel confident that raising my salary is the right answer. I know it's a high salary. And I know that this community's median income struggles. But how do you find that balance? You know, you have a, a master's level, a professional employee that you want to be able to have appropriate compensation. So my recommendation is that instead of a salary increase, that we continue to evaluate where we are as a city financially. And let's look at that next year if we want to. So I I'm okay with that. But I do think that the council can tonight decide if there is an amount of a bonus that would be appropriate. That could be a one time bonus that you say, this is an exceptional evaluation. This is the compensation that's appropriate for that. And that's something that could be decided on tonight. And then how come I listed this way is because I didn't know how to do that, to not put you in a box of what you would have to do. I was trying to put the wording as such so that you have the freedom to do it if you want. So anyhow, so I I would think the council should have that conversation if you want to even do that or not. And I will, we can go from there. And I hate having this conversation. I just want you to know.
Yeah, it's not easy to advocate for yourselves. I don't really feel prepared.
I'm saying, I'm saying the same thing. I really would like to, just personally, I'd like to wait, have a mayor actually have a, have a.
Have a discussion about it and maybe, you know.
We, I, you deserve to have an increase or a bonus or something. But I think we need to have all of us here to discuss the city, so we, we have four representatives. And a little bit of time to think so that we know where we're at.
I have never, ever been in this position before, so I I kind of need to do a little research and thinking and I'm not prepared.
I would recommend then if you'd like some feedback on what would be appropriate is to put it back on RV cog. My concern with putting it off to next year is that we're going to have two new council members that weren't a part of the evaluation, that weren't here to see the work and would have a way of weighing in on that. And so that was, and the mayor was supposed to call in. So that's, but understanding he was in a blizzard and the last time I talked to him, so I I know that stuff he was trying. But I, that was part of the concern of us having a special meeting tonight was just the concern of the timing of a new council coming in and being able to weigh on a decision that they haven't been a part of. So you all will be here in January. But the other piece is that also throws us into a different tax year. And so that's something else I would throw out there in consideration that if something is done in December, it's a different tax year than what is going on next year.
So do you have a dollar amount? Do you have a dollar amount in mind?
I do not. I would like, I, actually what I'm wondering is if we, I can take that back, do some research. Would this council be able to make a recommendation that the next council could approve? Or?
You can't encumber a next council.
Okay.
We could call another special meeting at some point before the end of the year, but I hate to do that in the holidays as they were going on. I will tell you that.
That was kind of the other thing I wondered is could we get back together? Give, give the council time. RV cog could do some research that I send out to the mayor, send to council. And then we try to come back together for a special meeting before the end of the year.
I don't know where you guys are on that.
I'm not going anywhere.
I don't mind.
I don't mind.
A week, but that's.
Like.
Probably gone.
Excuse day or something. But you could zoom in or.
I could zoom in.
Before Christmas. It's only a couple of days away. I mean, what? I don't need that.
Monday, either the, what would that be, the twenty-third or the thirtieth?
We could do Monday.
And we could zoom.
I can't. I can't do this Monday, the thirtieth. I could do this. Wait a minute, yeah, I could do it. Long. What day does that fall on?
Monday.
The thirtieth, yes?
Yep.
Yeah, I could do.
Is it really going to make it make that much of a difference on the fiscal year on it?
It'd be the calendar year.
The count, yeah.
It, it does to me, but I'm not going to put you in a spot to do anything you don't want to do.
Yeah.
No.
I don't even know what an appropriate amount would be or anything.
I really think we should wait.
No idea.
I mean, there'll be four of us here. We know that we probably want to be filled. We filed.
Why don't I send an email out? The other thing is. Is there a concern with the language that the resolution says right now under compensation? Would you like it to be different? Before we adopt a resolution, you'd want to look at that language as it is written.
They're vague. I'm not sure what it says. Decided to compensate the city manager's performance.
The number that keeps coming to, all right. So I remember when I the only comparable experience I have is. Having been a council president when we hired a city manager. And that we did that with another city manager and it was. There was in the range of two to $4,000 each year that they looked at. And so I, you know, for me, the number that kept coming to mind was maybe 2,000, not extravagant, but it's not.
Oh, yeah.
But I I'm not.
Another thing to consider that I've seen done before. When I worked elsewhere was just even a what a percentage would be if she were to get, say, a 3% increase on her salary and give that as a one time. That could be a larger amount, but just something to think about of, okay, would it would we compensate her maybe? You know, a 2% or what what may be a moving forward type increase, a going forward increase would be and give that as a one time. So you can look at what that looks like as well. We have a dollar amount right here.
2% would be $2,500.
Right. And so I I would, so when we look at cost of living, RV cog just did a. We surveyed all the jurisdictions last year so that we knew what to make a recommendation to our board. For our own employees and the. I believe CPI was. Yes, and we give a 3.5%. So cost of living increase might be standard and with stellar performance, you might want to think about a three or a 3.5. What would a 3%?
A 3% would be 3,750.
That's something I would just on the spot right now without going back to see what other jurisdictions do. I think it would be an appropriate amount of use of public funds. And looking at. Basically just saying it's almost a cost of living increase as well. You're even though I would like to call this a merit because it really is for a job well done. But I would say I wouldn't, RV cog probably wouldn't suggest on the spot without going back and really looking at it, seeing what other jurisdictions do for a city manager. I would say doing a 3.5 is what I saw a lot of jurisdictions do just for employees pay going up for cost of living. So 3.5 might be. To give yourself an idea, but then look at what the city's comfortable with.
I think if we take into consideration dropping the insurance stipend for vehicle use. A small bonus.
Say that all over again.
I'll write it down also.
I think that looking at the. Removing the insurance and a stipend for a vehicle use. And a small bonus might be.
Small collectively.
And just for as far as. Tax implication and reporting and such, if it were a bonus that'd be in this tax year. A vehicle compensation wouldn't start until next year.
Okay.
So. Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
No, absolutely. And and that's something that when I even do, you know, compensation studies for every jurisdiction and we do, we always look at. You know, budget, we look at the staff sizes and really we. It's hard because you're never really comparing apples to apples. Every city has their own. Situations and I think I think you're right, how you may want to compensate her. But I do think it's a pretty conservative. Spot, which is great for what Lily's concerned is getting the city back up and going. I think she knows a long. A a long term pay increase is definitely not a position she wants to put the city in, so.
Yeah, so you know, based on meritorious performance, based on bringing in a million seven. Grant.
A little less.
Million six in grant money this year. Is a $3,000 bonus at this time going to break the bank?
No, and that's where I was pulling those 3,000.
In my head. Forty two. Oh, two.
Yeah.
Two.
I'm just, I'm thinking of our finances and everything else that we do with this city.
Yeah.
But she isn't doing a great job, I think in the situation for the first year.
Can we can we compromise it 25? 2,500?
Yeah, I agree.
2,500.
2,500. Yeah, consensus on that. Okay.
Now, what about the insurance thing?
That that'll all come come after. So then. I think what Lily's looking for now is that we have in the in. Number five here under the. It says.
You don't have to change the wording of it, but it gave direction to Adrian on what that amount is.
Right.
That we follow through with that.
Stand as 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 a rather.
Correct. The language is that it says you count, you decided to compensate the city manager's performance and directs RV cog to ensure that this is carried out as directed by the council. So you give the verbal direction. She'll make sure that working with Mallory that we take care of it.
So the verbal direction is a $2,500. Bonus, okay.
Which is.
One time bonus.
One time bonus.
Is it better to express it in percent than dollars?
No.
That's what it is. 2% is 2,500.
Okay, so $2,500 bonus, okay. To be paid before the end of the year. Or. Do you want a different timeline on it?
No, that's fine.
Is that fine with you?
Going forward.
You and Ron have to sign it, so.
I'm leaving town. I'll be back in a couple of months.
Is RV cog giving given a direction then to remove insurance? From do an addendum to the employment agreement, removing insurance and also. Adding a section for a stipend instead of mileage. Is that something you would like me to bring back to council?
I and I would ask if you'd be willing to let us look at the whole contract.
That's what I would recommend is would you just look at the whole contract and that way you can bring it back to us?
Perfect.
Speaking for the. I'm thinking, you know, just bring that back to us so that way we can look at that.
So all we really need to make a decision on tonight was.
And if you want to adopt the resolution.
So now we need a motion.
So then we need a motion. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we. Pass a resolution number 24 R dash 33.
Second that. We'll call.
Counselor Beechine?
Yes.
Counselor Bergren?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Stan Cliff?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, you deserve more. You deserve more. I wish we had more to give you.
Well, that's my goal.
My first thought was $10,000. We could be like those CEOs, you know, throw a few million at them. Okay, so have we actually already covered pretty much everything on the agenda then those that they're all wrapped up together, A, B, and C?
Yep.
Right, okay. May I adjourn the meeting? Does anyone have anything else to say? You want to say something? Sure.
That's that's.
Another day, another way.
You have one employee. It's me.
She takes care of her.
All right then, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, Adrian.
Thank you.